Go ahead Chairman, you're all set.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. Please direct your attention to Selectman Larry Ryan for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It's also available for online at wrpsrockland.com and within 24 hours via video on demand at www.youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to www.wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements.
Thanks, Mike. I have two announcements tonight. The first is the group that is going to be redeveloping the Holy Family School off of Union Street, Connolly and Partners. They are looking to construct a 27-unit rental housing community for low-income seniors. And as the board remembers, they came in and did a presentation, a very detailed presentation in front of the board a couple of months ago. As part of their outreach efforts, they're going to be having a public forum on May 13th at 1:00 p.m. on Zoom. So want to the community to know about that. Everyone is welcome to participate by Zoom. It's on May 13th at 1:00. And we've posted all the Zoom details on our Facebook page and our Twitter page as well. So we encourage anybody that's interested in either potentially being a tenant living in this new development or just an interested butter or a community resident to attend that public forum. And then secondly, the Lydia Square Apartments that are currently under construction has a lottery open now, and that's lottery is open now through June 29th. They have 44 affordable apartments that are going to be available for seniors aged 62 and up. There's both one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. And the fees will include water, sewer, trash, heat and hot water. So we have the complete details and the application available on the town website and our Facebook and Twitter pages for anybody that's interested in putting their name into the lottery. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the review and approval of minutes from April 20th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion or approve the minutes of April 20th, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. So Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Stain wasn't there.
Fair enough. And Selectman Needham?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, next on the agenda, new business Cub Scout Yard Sale, request for use at Town Hall Plaza, June 19th, 2021.
So you have in your packet an email from Terry Davidson requesting the use of the Town Hall Front Plaza for their annual PAC 12 Yard Sale. It's going to be on the traditional Rockland Day date, June 19th. And we have no concern to that at all. We appreciate that they make sure to check with us ahead of time. And just thought we'd have the board make a formal vote of approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Cub Scout Yard Sale.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Good.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Selectman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Yes.
Selectman Needham?
Yes.
Okay, and myself. Okay, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I have none.
Old business, May 3rd, 2021 Town Meeting Recap and Follow-Up, Doug?
Sure. So as you know, the board, we were all there last night. So we know what happened. But for the public, in case anybody that's watching this meeting wasn't at Town Meeting, essentially, all the articles at Town Meeting passed except for the zoning articles. The floodplain bylaw did not pass, and the Gateway Mixed-Use Overlay District also did not pass. I can just say from my own, my own personal observations, I was certainly pleased that the first 40-plus articles that all led up, up until the zoning, you know, they all passed, I believe unanimously. And really without, essentially without any questions. And so, you know, we did a lot of preparation on the budget and all the other financial articles, and we were certainly pleased about those votes. You know, we, administration, and of course, you know, the board sponsored the two sets of zoning articles. So by definition, since it was something we recommended and put on the warrant, we wanted them to pass. So we're obviously disappointed they didn't. You know, my only other sort of large observation is, you know, I was, personally, I was surprised at the level of concern, particularly about the floodplain bylaw, just from my own experience. I thought that was kind of a no-brainer, and I didn't anticipate that level of concern about that particular article. We, you know, we certainly knew there would be a lot of questions and comments and feedback about the Gateway Mixed-Use Overlay District. But, you know, Town Meeting spoke very clearly last night. And we'll obviously abide by that. And with that, Mike, maybe I'll turn it back to you and be happy to expand on whatever you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, obviously, obviously, it was an interesting town meeting. We haven't had a town meeting like that in a while. So I guess I'll open it up to the other members of the board first. If there was anything that they wanted to address as pertaining to the town meeting. I know some people had some concerns, and maybe it would be done in your closing comments. But if you had something to say, this would be, I think, an appropriate time to say it, seeing it's on the agenda. So if anybody has anything to say.
So I guess, you know, I'll say it now instead of the closing comments. You know, last night was a great example of the townspeople being able to, you know, dictate how they want the town to go. So as much as people want to say that the town is run by a specific board or specific people or, you know, the good old Boy Network, last night just went to show again, the town is run by the townspeople. What's discouraging is so few townspeople actually take the time and the effort to get engaged to really understand what's going on. You know, to Doug's point, the floodplain piece. If anyone really did any, just a small little bit of investigating on that, voting that down is going to negatively impact anyone who lives in a floodplain in this town. Today, their property is gonna, is worth less than what it was because of the added cost and difficulties of getting flood insurance for those residents who are in a floodplain. And I bet you, there's a lot of residents that don't even know they live in a floodplain. They were absolutely negatively impacted by the vote last night. And I don't think people understand exactly the ramifications of what that, that vote last night came to. As far as the mixed use. You know, I've been now probably 15 years really involved in the town from the, from the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. I continue to hear the same thing. We need to do something about our taxes. But every time that we try to do something, it's very, very difficult to get things done. So that vote last night, and I get it. They don't want a mixed-use overlay. All that means now is when the sewer plant, and it has to be done, there's going to be less businesses to help share that cost. So that's more money out of the town's people's pockets. You know, we've tried to have a plan to build the business base up. So we actually may be able to have a discussion about a split rate. Last night's vote has another negative impact on that. So while, you know, I, for 15 years, I've been consistent. I think it's our job to try to bring benefits to the townspeople, try to get the information out. And at the end of the day, it's up to the townspeople to make a decision. I just think last night, for the first time in a while, the townspeople didn't make a good decision for the town. So time will tell, but, you know, it certainly was not how we thought it was going to go. And, you know, when, when the taxes keep going up, last night's going to have an impact on that. It's going to be a reason why the taxes keep going up. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Rich. Anybody else?
Okay. I just have a question. I know I've seen a lot of comments and heard a lot of voices on this issue that we haven't, you know, really represented the people of Rockland. You know, people have asked, is there a way we can send out a survey to town residents to actually hear what, you know, they want and need in this town? I know we've set up some workshops around town over the past few years, pre-COVID, and people came and got to put their input in what they'd like to see in the town of Rockland going forward. So I don't know if that's an option, that we can mail townwide to see what the people want. So then we can have a better idea, I guess, of what they actually want to see move forward in this town. I also just want to thank our team here at Town Hall. I was a little displeased with one of the comments with, that the citizens do not have trust in the town leadership, and I couldn't disagree with that more. We put a great team in place. I think we really restored the public's trust in town government over the past few years with our recent hires, including Doug, Jen, Biz. So I just want to say thank you to the work that you do every day. We do appreciate it.
Chairman Olaf Linay. To chime in, I actually, so yesterday was my first town meeting as selectman, and I, I do look at it as an as an opportunity almost in terms of the voices out there, like Kara said, we're craving more engagement. And so, to me, it'll be a great challenge to figure out how can we engage further? And how can we utilize communication tools to do that? And I'll, I'll look forward to trying to do that personally. But whether just some sort of, even if it's an interactive forum or an invitation for, for those to to engage more. But I do think people want to be heard, and it would be great to figure out how, how we can do that or how we can do it from here forward more.
Thanks Tiffany. So, so I had a conversation with Doug just actually prior to the side of the meeting. Had a lot of conversations today with some residents, a couple of them that are pretty prominent residents that were strong participants in last night's meeting. And, you know, I left that meeting feeling, for the first time in all my years of serving this town. It felt different. It felt as though, for the first time, as if I didn't know what the residents wanted. And, and I know that wasn't the case because prior to COVID, I met quite often. I held office hours, Rich held office hours, Larry held some office hours, and we met with residents on a regular basis. And if residents didn't come up, we were still there. We were still available. There were times where I'd sit in the selectmen's office for two hours, and nobody would come up. There were other times where I'd have three people outside the door waiting in line, and I'd be up there for four hours. So the attempt to engage residents has always been, has been there. And, you know, obviously, COVID threw us for a loop. I don't think social media is the best way to engage because it just brings out the ire of everybody, for whatever reason. And people that don't live in town that that pretend to care about the issues but have no idea, and it has no impact on their daily life. But I left that meeting, and I thought back to, to when I first ran. You know, I ran on the promise that, that I was going to reduce the taxes, the tax burden on the residents in the town. One of the first things that I tried to do when I got on the board was, was split the tax rate. But after, after I educated myself a little bit more on how that, how that works, you know, I realized that in order to do so, we would have to, we would have to increase the amount of commercial revenue that we have in the town. I think at the time that I got on, it was, it was something like 8317 or 8218. So it was 82% residential and 18% commercial. And when I asked the assessor what that rate would look like, it was virtually no savings to the residents. So it wasn't really worth it. So, you know, we looked back and we said, all right, if we, what's the magic number? If we can get to a 75%, 25%, then, then we might be able to do something. So we focused our energy, knowing, knowing all along, never ignoring the fact that even though it's not the job of this board to make decisions as it pertains to the water and sewer in the town, because we have elected officials, commissioners that are in those positions, but we are here every single time to support them, anytime they want to reach out to us or anytime that they have reached out to us. We keep that in mind, knowing that that is on our plate, coming down the road in the future. So we've made it a priority of this board to bring in commercial revenue and commercial development. The hope last night, and nobody was pulling anything over anybody's eyes. We've always been completely transparent. We talk about it at all of our selectmen's meetings. So if people missed it, it's because they didn't watch the meetings. But the hope was always to engage these developers and to get them to help us, assist us in, in strengthening our infrastructure. We would never bring people into this town that we're going to jeopardize the infrastructure as it is. The opportunity that we lost last night was an opportunity to perhaps tap into water from another community and possibly, you know, tap into the NWRA, which would solve a lot of our water issues as a town. It was also going to be an ask that these developers that come into town, that they assist us in, you know, refurbishing our wastewater treatment plant or replacing, if that's the thing. We're talking potential billion-dollar projects coming into the town, development project coming into the town. You know, the least they can do is support us in our infrastructure needs. That was the goal. Unfortunately, you know, we couldn't pass any zoning, and, you know, it's not, it's, it's not a huge concern in the sense that I'm not hurt. You know, we, as members of this board of selectmen, we sit back and we look at every single issue that comes to us. And we don't make the decisions based on what's best for Mike, Larry, Rich, Kara, and now Tiffany. We make the decisions to put it, put an article on a warrant because we think it warrants the, the consideration of the general public and their right to vote on it. That's what we do. I'm not attached personally to anything, any of these articles. It's just, do the people of Rockland deserve an opportunity to consider this article to pass? They chose not to, which is fine. So with that being said, one of the things that I discussed with one of these members of the community this morning is that I'm going to make myself available, and we are going to put this out there in the form of a Zoom meeting. I'll invite any resident that wants to participate, and I'll answer whatever questions any of these residents have as it pertains to what our, how long-term goals are, what our short-term goals are, what we're doing as it pertains to some of the issues. I've always been a person that believes in problem-solution. All right, so if you have a problem, let's, let's work on identifying a solution. So being that I'm the chairman of this board, and I've heard over and over again last night that we're out of touch, that we don't listen. I don't feel as though I'm guilty of either of that. I feel as I've always made myself available and listened to every resident's concern. There's just certain things that we're not able to do. But, you know, we can do this. We'll, I'll put myself out there. And Doug, Doug said he was willing to join me. We'll answer whatever questions we can, you know, as long as it's not something that's before another committee or it's not something that's in litigation. We'll do the best we can to answer the questions. And if it's something that, that belongs in front of another board, we'll bring that, that concern to that board for you. So with that said, if nobody has any other comments about last night's meeting, we can move on on the agenda.
Mike, can I make one last comment?
Absolutely.
One other point, I guess I wanted to make is, you know, certainly, you know, I did my best last night, you know, I know Jen did. Biz did a great job because nobody asked any questions on the numbers, so she's all set. But I think, you know, with, with all the concerns about the zoning articles, I guess I just want to kind of beat a drum that I've, that I've beat in the past, which is this really kind of highlights, you know, the need in Rockland for a planner. You know, I mean, in, in any other town, you know, the town planner would be taking the lead on those articles and presenting them and answering the questions. And, you know, we did our best, but, you know, we're not planners, and I'm not making excuses. I take full responsibility for everything, everything on the warrant. But I just want to highlight, you know, as when, when people question sometimes, when we talk about different staffing needs. When we think back to last night and a lot of the, you know, the questions and the way things happened, I think, having a planner on staff, these are the types of things they're dedicated to doing and would just help us in the future. So I just wanted to make that, that point again. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Chairman?
May I?
Selectman Ryan, of course.
I think that people were angry about some certain 40B projects that they don't think that the selectmen stood against or whatever. And what I tried to explain to some people today on Facebook is that we, as a town, voted to extend the 40B project in an election, and I forget the year in the house, but so on the Facebook page. But anyway, they were, they were angry, and they wanted to express their anger to us, I guess. That's, and the way, and the way they did that was, they think that we're planning, I don't know what they think they're planning that. We're not, we haven't prepared them for the sewer problems, and we haven't prepared them for the water problems. And, you know, I told people I've been speaking about this for years, and they said, well, you should have won this and not done the school project. Yeah. Hello? You know, some, it's not our job to start projects. It's our job to present them to the people and allow you to make the decisions. And that's what we did with the school project. We didn't stand in their way and say, no, the select board, the selectmen doesn't want the, the school. We allowed the people to vote and make their decision, and they did. And, and when the people who found out that that vote happened said, how come we weren't told it was an election? You know what? We, we put it on, we advertised, we put it on everywhere, we put it on social media, we discuss this stuff. And then they come to the meetings and say, we're not prepared to make decisions on this because nobody ever told us about it. And, you know, and where is the failure? Is it with us or is it with the residents who, you know, unless they're involved intimately with any personal kind of problem, then, you know, they don't, they don't pay attention. If it's on the other end of town, usually nobody pays attention. We put together a very nice plan in a part of town that has no residential borders to speak of. A few houses maybe here and there along John, one of the roads, but that's about it. And, and, and everybody worked hard to put together a plan for the future, a way that we could allow different, different avenues of receiving financial gain from businesses and adding different businesses in an area of the town that could, quite frankly, handle it. But when I first came here in 1996, we had problems in the same area, and I heard the same effect. Well, Hingham. What about Hingham? How were they? You know, Hingham has nothing to do with us. It never has, it never will. If they wanted to put their own things in there, they can. And they said, well, they can't get in there through Rockland. No, they can't. But they could certainly go down the street 100 yards and go up any of them side streets, just like they did Norman Street across from my house, and put in whatever they wanted down that street. So Hingham can still do whatever they want, regardless of what the people think that, you know, voted against it. People were just angry. They're frustrated. They, they think that the town's not standing with them, and that's because all of a sudden, a problem comes up, and we're not there saying, oh, you know, what can we do to help you? The way that we help people regarding all these issues is that we hold a public forum regarding all these different projects and have the people who are planning to do the project come down and explain to the people in the town. And if you're against it, be there at the meeting to show your opposition. That's how it works. It's not up to us to say no to anything, especially when the town has voted for it. So if, you know, so you, we come to you, we present the plan that we think is going to be a good, solid plan for other people in the town of Rockland. If they don't like it, then they don't like it, and they vote against it, they vote against it. However, there was really nothing, the only thing that frustrated me last night, there was nothing gained by anybody. There was no gain, no winners in that, in any of those decisions regarding any of the zoning issues. And not that we lost, but there was no, you know, the people who voted against the zoning articles didn't really gain anything because they're still all privately owned, zoned for business, blah, blah, blah. So that's not going to change. And, and we still need water and sewer. That's not going to change. You know, I, I mentioned today, we did a 40 yard down the downtown Rockland, and we rezoned the whole place so we could have buildings four stories high and businesses on the bottom, and we made a whole section. And, and how is that working for us? How many takers have we had in that? Zero. And why? Because we have water and sewer issues that have to be resolved first. And I think that most people who understand, who own business in Rockland or who own property, understand that, you know, growth isn't going to come right away due to those issues. But, you know, so, you know, I understand the frustration, but I just don't understand the lack of trust. Especially after all the things that we've done over the last few years to lead them through a hellish mess and, and to come to this point. And, and during a pandemic year, when a lot of towns are laying off people and doing things, we have a fairly well-stable financial government for the town of Rockland. And it doesn't come by accident. It comes from hard work. It comes from dedicated people, and you see them sitting right in front of you in a row, if you're out there listening to us tonight. And all these people spend their hours working for you in your behalf. And not everybody's going to agree with the, with the techniques or whatever. But Town Meeting is unfortunately, one of those things that if you bring enough of your people there, you can vote for whatever you want. And that's what they did. They won that battle, even though they gained nothing. They still won that battle, if you will, and, and, and good for them. It's just that, you know, it's not because we had a bad preparation. It's not because we didn't do our work and make sure that everything's worked out. There were people who hold grudges on a lot of different things, and, and when they were talking about the businessmen who own that property and things like that, you could hear the bitterness in some of their voices. And, and quite frankly, I don't understand it, but it's, you know, our water. You know, our water, does that mean that anybody who owns land, a piece of property in the town of Rockland is entitled to the same water as anybody else? Or does it mean that we can withhold water from those people that we don't want to let them build? You know, it's, it's, it's a very fine line that we travel, and you know something, and people will probably rag on me again today on, on Facebook and say that, you know, I'm out of, out of touch with people. But you know something? I've been in touch since 96, and I've worked hard to separate families from the town government, if you will, so that now we have a professional outfit from the top to the bottom, from collectors to clerks to treasurers and everything. And it's all working great. And that's proven by the fact that the people vote all of our financial articles without hesitation, 100%, like you said, up until that point. So then some misinformation gets out there or some, whatever gets to go to people. I guess that's what's going to happen, and you can stack the Town Hall Meeting to, to whatever you want to do. I guess that's what's going to happen and you can stack the town hall meeting to uh, to whatever you want to do. You know, that's always been a threat for many, any, every time we have a town meeting that, you know, what if all of a sudden they, you know. All the people who oppose what we're trying to do will show up. Well, they did and this is what happened. And you know what? I, I say congratulate them on their organization, but um. As a select person and as a person who works for the town, I, I just don't see what the gain was. There was no gain. For anybody last night regarding those zoning articles. The only losers were the people in the floodplain who can't get their insurance now. And, and, and the other thing is to, just the other place is still zoned, still owned by private enterprise. They're still going to try to build things there. And it'll just be something different, that's all. So, and, and it didn't eliminate the forty B threat, if that's what you want to call it. The only thing that's going to eliminate that is once we hit our ten percent um, number and, and we'll hold it steady, we can shut off. Any further projects beyond that point with, you know, within reason and, and how you deal with it. But it's a very frustrating, um, because I know, for us, because we know how hard you all have worked. To make this presentation and to have it sort of kicked out. Without really a, you know. I, I won't say a true cause because you know, these people, their true cause uh, is thinking, is, is. They're thinking about Rockland also. They're just not thinking about it in the way that, that we think about it because we're concerned with the big picture and they're only concerned with. One picture. So I'm sorry if I, you know, feel like I'm lecturing anybody or anything, but I just want to explain to people that. Everybody in this picture right here that I'm looking at puts in one hundred percent of time and effort. For the people of the town of Rockland, not for any one person. We've gotten away from that sort of stuff a long time ago and, and things are working really well for the town. And I hope it continues that way into the future. But you know, again, disappointment, yeah. You know, it's because of disappointment of not understanding um, the re, the real reasoning behind it, but I think. People were angry and they had to vent their frustration someplace and this was it. So, you know, on we go. So that's just one thing and now we can go on to the next. That's all, and that's enough for me to say.
Thanks Larry. Okay, uh, if there's no other comments, I guess we can move on. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated, Doug.
I have none.
Uh, county ministers report and correspondence, Doug.
Sure, uh, two things tonight. One, as I wanted to uh, acknowledge some staffing changes. Uh, to start with, we had a, a couple of retirements. Diane Malino in the treasurer's office and Nancy Slack. On the library are, are both going to be retiring in mid-July. Uh, and so we've, we've had some staffing changes. Um, Christine Campanile. Um, was promoted within the clerk's office to be the new assistant town clerk. We want to congratulate Christine. We also have a new sewer superintendent, Keith Nastazia. Um, he comes from, comes with over twenty years of experience. Uh, working for Department of Public Works. Um, he has a bachelor's of science degree along with many different engineering certificates. Um, and Keith just started yesterday, I believe was his first day. Um, we've also hired a new assistant treasurer, um, Allison Sullivan. Um, she was previously an employee at the library uh, with many years of customer service. Um, and reconciliation experience. She's a Rockland resident and has an accounting and finance degree from Bridgewater State. She's going to start in June. And we have a new library administrative assistant cataloguer, Lena Brunel. Um, has more than seven years of experience working at the library as a technician. And is going to be using her experience in this new administrative role. And she has a bachelor's from Smith College and that transfer is going to be. Uh, complete on May twenty-fourth. So I just want to congratulate all those people that have um. Uh, got new roles and welcome, uh, welcome Keith, uh, welcome Keith to the town. Certainly being the new superintendent. Sewer superintendent um, is going to be a big job and he's gonna, can have a lot of work ahead of him. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight sort of a, a fun project, um, some good news. Uh, as, as you all remember, last year, or actually I think it was two years ago, um, town meeting. Um, appropriated funding from the Community Preservation Act uh, to restore the King Philip Hand Tub. That's the. Large antique fire apparatus. And we originally went out to bid um. Uh, to do, we did a request for proposals and it was kind of a complicated procurement to make sure we, you know, hired. The most qualified, you know, group that could restore this antique fire apparatus. But it was, unfortunately, we, we did it a little bit too complicated and, and we didn't get any bidders. So we restructured it again. Um, once we got through, you know, a lot of the work we had to deal with COVID earlier, we restructured it, restructured it. And did a simpler invitations for bid uh, that was based strictly on price, but we made sure to have enough quality criteria in there. So only qualified bidders could bid on it. And we got uh, one uh, highly qualified, successful bid from a company called. Firefly Restorations and they're based out of Hope, Maine. Um, we're very excited that they've been on the project. We've awarded them. Uh, the contract. Um, they'll have up to two years to complete the work. Um, and if, if any of you want to look up Firefly Restorations, you know, on social media or, or on the, on the web, you'll see they do remarkable work. They are nationally renowned for this type of stuff. They, they restore, you know, Jay Leno's per, personal. Vehicles. I mean, they're that, that grade of, of quality and they specialize in antique fire apparatus. So the chief is very excited about it. And uh, we're looking forward to getting that done. So I thought I'd end with some positive news tonight. That's it.
Sounds good. Thanks Doug. Uh, next on the agenda, selectman's comments. Comments and opinions. Uh, expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the view of the board of the selectmen and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Miss Needham.
Well, I'm still, I'm still new here and um. I'm looking forward. I just wanted to share, I'm very much looking forward to um. Continued work with everyone in, in getting involved and um, doing what I can and what we can do together. Um, I do, I do have one question about, I was um. I guess a little surprised by the, the FEMA and the, the flood insurance effort and um. Down the road, I'd be, I'd be curious to, to learn more about. Um, follow up for the next time, something, that opportunity may or may not. Um, present itself, but um, I'd love to get involved with the, down the road, but um, like I said, I'm. I'm still the newbie and I'm very much looking forward to working with everybody.
May I speak quickly? Uh, yeah, Tiffany, I uh, I just reached out to uh, some of our insurance people in town. To get a um, try to see if we can establish how much difference the price is going to cost between private insurance and FEMA's insurance. If there is any and, and how it applies. And so um, at some point I'll introduce you to them. So that you can uh, start to learn the, the players within the town that you need to uh, deal with to learn. More about our town. You're only, you're sort of, you're a very newbie to the town. So it's um, you know, it's, it would be good to meet some of the. I won't call them the old boys because there's, there's a lot of women involved too that, that have uh, spent time with this town and done a lot of things and can. Can help you in your endeavors to become a better select person.
Absolutely. Thank you, Larry.
We'll reach out to you and give you names and phone numbers to call and introduce yourself and, and um. Because that's the way you make it. You uh, you have to know the players and, and how to, how to um. To deal with them on, on, on an equal basis and, and et cetera. And that comes with experience. So we'll help you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, moving on. Thanks Tiffany.
Uh, I don't have any more comments.
Thanks Rich. Uh, Selectman Ryan?
I would like to congratulate my granddaughter, Kate Ryan. Of Austin, Texas, who will be graduating from the University of Texas at Austin. Uh, this month and hopefully my wife and I will get a shot down to go and join them in their celebration. That's all I got.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Selectman Nyman?
I don't have any additional comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Kara. And uh, yeah, I, I, I think I said enough earlier, but you know, I, I think uh. I, I think it's important. I think it's something that, that I'm, I'm excited to do. We'll uh, we'll, we'll try to do what we can to, to make the residents feel more heard and uh. And we'll, we'll get together and we'll try to figure out what day that's best and we'll get the information out to the residents. Um, in the meantime. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn uh, to enter executive session uh, for the purpose of. One second, my screen just went.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, technology. Yeah, thanks. Hold on, let me just read what the executive session, my screen just timed out. Uh, for purpose number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real pop, property. Uh, map eighty-two, lots two and sixteen and map twenty-four, lot twenty-six. And I have Rich's motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Rich, a second from Larry. All of this in favor, it'll be a roll call vote. Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want the other side?
Great night.